...focus her energy on other projects. There will be a huge loss to our board. She is personally a board member that I've leaned on heavily and for guidance and advice. She has been very valuable to the board. She will be most by all of us. On a side note, I've already been lobbying Shane. It'd be nice to have another female to be appointed to the board. We have a lot of men and they're great, but it'd be nice to replace the second. We only have two women on our board, so it'd be great if we could replace her with a woman. But I don't know, bakers can be choosers at this point. This is a lot of information I'm throwing at you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. And I do have some new marketing materials for our industrial part that I'd like to leave you with. They're also available at any time to take a sit down. If there's a specific project you want to talk about, or if you just want to talk in general, those will be available.
Any questions for Ms. Walsh? No questions? Thank you, Ms. Walsh, for your presentation. We'll look forward to reading your marketing materials.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
We'll move next to the next item of business under new business. Discussion of 2017 council budget for attorney. Indiana Code 364624 allows a legislative body to hire contract competent attorneys and legal research assistants on terms it considers appropriate. The city council has appropriated $5,000 for a council clerk treasurer attorney in 2017. I believe is that the way it's worded? Or are there two separate ones? Is there one?
I thought I had one of them in 17.
I think that's right. I'm not 100 percent.
I'd have to go downstairs and look at it, Shane, but previously I had one for my office.
I looked at gateway, but it was probably late one night.
I'm almost positive. At one point in time, you had legal counsel for the council, and it was taken out of the budget. Do you remember that, Brian?
I don't remember being taken out, but I remember putting it in.
Well, we didn't know it was taken out.
So, yeah, they've had it previously.
So, Councilman, we brought this up the last meeting, so I'll yield before you.
The procedure on this is a motion needs to be made to authorize the president, was it President Prokam? What is that?
Mrs. Pearson.
Okay. Of the council, Mrs. Pearson, to authorize her to solicit attorneys to fill that position for the council. And I provided her with a list from IAC, Indiana Cities and Towns, to be able to, from our area, that are dues members and have went through municipality training to, as a first step, to looking at filling that position. So with that in mind, I make a motion that we authorize Mrs. Pearson, Councilwoman Pearson, to go and make that search and fill that position so we can be represented at the first of the year.
Second. We have a motion in the second to authorize Councilwoman Pearson to solicit, solicit quotes or approach attorneys for the position of council attorney at first of the year. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move next to, there's nothing needed on appointment to boards and commissions by council. I just wanted to let you know that in January, you will have appointments to the area planning commission, I believe, Councilman Garrison, is that correct?
Correct.
Would you like to give a brief statement?
It's the time consuming. I also am struggling with the part where I'm concerned with how much it benefits the city. I'm really just ready to step down.
Thank you, Councilman. So, to the area planning commission, the city council appoints a member, an appointee from this body to serve on the area planning commission. The council also has two appointments, the Delphi redevelopment commission, the oil, and Ms. Worthing are on that commission, and they can be reappointed. I just wanted to let you know that those appointment processes will be happening in January, as well as a selection of a president pro temp of the council. So, just wanted to let you know.
One member of EDC.
That in the past has been appointed by the mayor.
All three appointments. We'll move next to approval of 2017 regular meeting schedule. There are two days where holidays land on the Monday. That is January 2nd, which would be the observation of, am I at the right place? The observation of New Year's Day, because it's on Sunday, falls on Monday, so we would have our council meeting on Tuesday that week. And then is it Labor Day that falls in September? So instead of Monday, that would fall on Tuesday. I also put in here budget workshops, so we can go ahead and plan those out, so we don't have to scramble coming years to watch for Monday, the 10th at 6:30. Monday, July 10th at 6:30, and Monday, July 17th at 6:30. Is there any discussion amongst the council?
I move for approval of the 2017 meeting schedule as presented.
All right. We have a motion in the second to approve the 2017 Delphi City Council meeting schedule. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move next to additional appropriations. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Clerk Treasurer Aldridge, you presented this with a memorandum. So if you could give us a kind of a summation of memorandum you provided and the funds that you're showing in this.
This is your additional appropriation to come to the end of the year. This is where you take your negative grants that are, their status is in a negative fund. You, and let me backtrack a little bit. Your grants can be legally negative at the end of the year, but if it's, for example, an 80-20 grant slip, anything that has been reimbursed, the 80%, the 20% that is owed by the city, the money has to leave the general and go to those separate funds and make that part up. Is that how I'm describing it? Does it make sense to you? We do this every year, and we will continue to do it till we wrap up grants, and hopefully then our budgets will stay more in line. In the time I've been here, you have done an additional appropriation every year except one. But this covers this. The only thing that I did not include in this additional appropriation this year is the owner occupied housing on phase one. And I think that's because that's in a position that that's something that needs to be negotiated. Even when we get the $5,000 from IHCPA, there will still be a negative balance that we were not supposed to have. So that has to be a negotiated fact, and state board, I think, will understand that. Everything else on this additional appropriation is ours, and whether it goes to the lighthouse that we did, that we never received reimbursement. Not all is stellar. You also have your balance on the interurban trail. And there again, this is the funds that have been reimbursed so far. This is our share. Same way with Freedom Bridge is now a completed project, and we have another additional $4,000 that we need to kick in. We have kicked in previously on that. The rest of it is stellar projects. Then because we are the provider unit, the fire protection territory is a separate entity, but we are the provider unit, and it is our responsibility to provide financial reports and statements for them with DLGF and state board. If they need an additional appropriation, which they do, of $100,000, and in their case, that $100,000 was for, started their building process, and it was for their, is Darryl gone or still here? Is for his engineering and consulting to start the whole package process and carry them through. So that is your additional appropriation this year. This is way down from last year, and next year I look for it to be down more.
Do we have any questions from the council for Clerk Treasurer Aldridge?
So what's the total of that?
Your total that you're actually taking out of your general fund is $771,000, $782.19. The fire territory is taking $100. And what you need to do for me tonight, so I now can complete my paperwork and get it into DLGF, you have to pass a resolution, which approves this additional appropriation and allows me to finish my paperwork and submit to DLGF. The last day that can be submitted to them in order to get handled this year is the 15th of December, but I want it in before the 15th of December.
What's a resolution?
It'd be one. That'd be the only resolution you guys have done this year.
Oh, no, we just do the ordinance on the resolution.
Councilman, I've got a, as this is a public hearing, members of the public have an opportunity to speak on this matter. So, if there are any members of the public who would like to talk on the subject of additional appropriation resolution 2016-1, appropriating $771,782.19 from the general fund to the specified funds, as Clerk Treasurer Aldridge pointed out, then from $100,000 from the fire territories, whatever the fund had been building up money in, to allow for engineering, any access would be allowed towards the construction of the building. Is there any public comments?
Bottom line, where's the funding at this year? Where's our total cash this year compared to last year? Are we doing okay still?
Yes, you actually are. Your money's down. I mean, you're not setting like you were when we started stellar, but how could you?
Then expect a bit.
No, good. Because you're not. And you're down, but your revenue is actually up. By the time everything is done, and I think, I'm ball I expected here tonight and didn't come, so I think by the next meeting, they will be here. They're going to give you a balance as of 15, and hopefully they'll do it for 16, too. You're going to be oversome, but we'll know when we get totally down. We're over.
Yeah, but we're not to the point where we're, we're, hey, four million started with, and we're going to have 500,000 left, right?
No, you're not, no, you're not anywhere close to baking banks in our backs. No, no, we're close, Jeff. We're carrying still. We never ever touched the CD. There's a million dollars in CD. Our rainy day, even if you don't look at our community crossing money and stuff, our rainy day is good. Our general is staying over $3 million in our general operating account. So we've absorbed it, but then I'll clarify that. We've absorbed probably some of that because we pushed it off on water. Water paid for an awful lot of your projects downtown that we first anticipated stellar paying for. Stellar didn't, chose to spend that money in other directions, and water, water ate a lot, and wastewater did downtown.
Is that fair to the customers in town?
To the customers in town? How does that hurt you?
It makes the rates go up.
I mean, it hasn't.
Those were water projects.
Those were water projects.
They were water, sewer projects that didn't go by stellar.
Yeah, but when we started, there was money in the, from the state to do that. I was at the meeting with that.
Yeah, but that changed.
Well, we got some money through the water exchange, but 400.
We ended up on that water exchange program. We ended up receiving a total of $430,000. That was spent more than a minute ago.
And that went to the water department, around.
That went back into that fund, that water exchange fund.
So the, I'm ball will even object that, too?
Yes.
As it's still the public hearing section of the meeting, do we have any other public comments on the additional appropriation resolution 2016-1? Here we go. Now close the public hearing. Back to the public meeting. City council, you have in front of you additional appropriation resolution 2016-1. Do we have any discussion on this matter?
I move for approval of resolution 2016-1.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve additional appropriation resolution 2016-1. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move next to internal controls. We talked about this a little back, and I believe it was April when we met in the fire department base. What you have presented to you is almost an exact replica of the city of Frankfurt's internal control ordinance in Exhibit 8. This is mandated by Indiana Code, which makes state board of accounts have this ordinance. Is that correct? Would you like to further elaborate on this matter?
Basically, an entire document of formalities of checks and balances to make sure that everything that goes on in city business is being done correctly. So there are a lot of standards. I mean, we're talking about ethical values all the way to checks and balances on funds. So that's essentially what this is, and the mayor is, yeah, absolutely correct. So we pulled from Frankfurt, and it's almost identical, obviously customized a bit to Delphi. Just something they require we have on the books, and it has to be passed, I believe, by December 31st. Is that correct?
Clerk Treasurer Aldridge has had an opportunity to look this over. Ms. Aldridge, did you see anything in the document that would need a meeting?
I, I looked at it very quickly. I, I don't know. I, I do know that if we have to have something on record, or we put our budgets, we could put our budget in general. This has to be filed. I've got to scan it, upload it for DLGF. It came out as a requirement both endorsed by DLGF and state board of account, and the deadline for it was December 31st, 2016. So it's got to be on our book. If there is, it would be minute. I think internal controls, and let me quickly explain something to you. If you want to look at internal controls, if you have an office that's established and you have a clerk and two people, there is a big difference in how you can control your internal controls versus an office that have 20 girls. It gets so specific when it discusses that if someone receives the money, which would be like Donna, then Donna can't possibly make the deposit. So I am in a position now that there is, I'm in the office, and Donna's in the office, and a part-time person. So how do you delegate and change that authority on constant time, those duties? There is a big difference. But there is a big difference in how we apply the stuff that is done in my office versus when I came here. So those changes have been looked at, they've been addressed, but it's an ongoing issue. I can never address internal controls as well as someone who has 10 women working in the office, or 20, or even five. It's a difference, but it has to be there. It has to be addressed as well as you can do. I will give you a crazy example. When I came into that office, there wasn't even a cash register tape in the cash register. State board had said for the last five or six years, you ran anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000 off from what was billed and what your revenue was. We put a cash register tape in, made other people sign off on it, and we suddenly dropped to a $120 difference in a year's time. Anything can happen, but you cannot, with a very, very small office, it's impossible to do everything every day that this requires you to do. You have to, both you as a council, the board of works, and my office have to work together and just have to do the best you can do.
So I believe this would be ordinance 2016-23?
Yeah, because you changed it around. That's all right.
I would just like to comment that if we knew we had to do this in April, and here we are at zero hour, and we just got it moments ago, I am not ready to approve something that, when I went through the other version, on almost every page, the board of works has authority over this, authority over this, authority over this. I would like to, I don't know enough about it, but I would like to sit down with Leanne and at a special meeting, if we are indeed having a special meeting, December the 15th or something.
For what?
I don't know.
About building regulations? Is that one of them?
Tell me why I'm meeting December 15th. Because I've forgotten.
It's the building code enforcement.
Oh. I would be fine with, if we could pass it on first reading tonight and then approach it again at that December 15th meeting, that'd be.
I'm not in favor of passing it tonight.
On first reading?
No, I'm not. I mean, I just got it an hour ago.
And Ms. Martin, can you explain this?
I forget what month it was that they even mandated it and installed the new requirements. We did start talking about it because we knew it was going to come up, but nothing from the state was passed down to us.
You did not discuss it until up here at the June or July meeting, and because my interpretation to begin with, it had to be passed in July. And then they changed their minds, said by the end of the year. So it started, I think, if you look back in our minutes, it was probably June, the first time that it was brought up. And that was because I was under the assumption it was, had to be passed by July 1st.
Right.
Then they, state board changed it and mandated it had to be passed by December 31st. Then in the meantime, state board was supposed to send out codes, was supposed to send out recommendations, a regular workbook form almost, that you could work with, whether you were, because your internal controls is entirely different for a town versus a city. So there's two sets of internal controls that you're dealing with, and those didn't come out till probably September or October.
Let me, Ms. Martin, the difference between the document that you've provided versus what was given out with Saturday's packets, what are the edits that you made?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get that question. Sorry, Colin. I did not change any substance as far as what you saw on Saturday. It was more so formatting. I believe I, I think in the original, maybe the very, very, very first page under policy, I think I maybe took an additional sentence out of that, but no changes from what you read substantively on Saturday. Is that when you sent the packets? Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
So since Saturday. I just cleaned up the formatting and just honestly just checking some research just to make sure it complied with the code.
Well, if we've got a regular council workshop on the 15th, we can surely address it then, couldn't we? Give us more time to read it and go over it.
Sure, yeah.
That'd be fine. If in the interim you see amendments that you'd like to remade to it, prefer if you send those to Ms. Martin and myself and Clerk Treasurer Aldridge, so that we can have those prepared by that December 15th meeting.
I'm glad to make any changes.
Put that on the motion to table until December 15th.
And make that motion.
Aye. Motion in the second to table, proposed ordinance 2016-23 until the December 15th meeting, special meeting. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I ask a question of the council? Logistically, if you're talking about it next meeting, are we going to pass it with just whatever edits that you propose, so that it's done this month, or how are we going to?
Well, we have to do it.
Okay.
For December 31st, but it hardly seems fair to, I mean, this is a law that says control. It's control, and I just don't feel comfortable giving total authority to something that I don't know if that's the way the clerk's office prefers to deal with, or is required to deal with. I don't know enough about the clerk's office activities to say, okay, this, are you doing this now? Or is this something different that we're changing? So that's why I would like to go over it. I guess, do we go over it, make a work session or time that, I mean, maybe I'm the only one that is concerned, but. If that's what you want to do, you lot plenty of time, because I'm not going to let you leave the building till you pass something for me.
15.
Oh, 15. Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe. I wonder where you did that.
All right. We'll move on to Ms. Laney's business, and I'd may, actually, is going to change. Originally, for 2016 engineering, we were going to allow that to roll back into the general fund and ask the council to do an additional appropriation next year, so that we could apply that towards the engineering on Samuel Milroy. That was because I thought we had to have a contact sign. Clerk Treasurer Aldridge informed me that by having the documentation that we have from the engineer on that project, we're fine to encumber it until 2017. So I apologize, it's on the agenda. That's going to be an encumbrance as opposed to us asking for additional appropriation next year. Do we have any questions on that matter? Here we go. Now move next to city council comments and requests. Councilwoman Pearson? Councilman Shockley? Councilman Garrison?
Aye.
Councilman Surer?
I'd like to address the letter that we received from Board of Works member Dyward at the end of November. I don't know how the other councilmen feel. I assume we all got the letter, but quite frankly, that letter is, I think it's disgusting and terrible. I personally think that we have enough situation going on with dealing with the building inspector situation, back and forth, without politicizing four people's death. And I, I just think that's terrible, and I think that's wrong. Again, I don't know how much, what the other councilmen think about it, but quite frankly, if this was on the national level, Mr. Dyward should resign. And if you knew about it beforehand, you should resign, too, because that thing is terrible. Did you get a copy of that?
I would stand to say that you're interpreting it wrong, what he was going for, because I believe what he's trying to say is why we're him hauling around about code enforcement. If you look what's happened with the terrible thing over the floor, the fire we just had in Delphi, and the fire that there had in Oakland, California, where the actual city councilman said nobody filled out any of the codes, they hadn't come and got any of the permits, people are dying. And I believe what he's trying to say is why we're him hauling around. It's liable to happen to us.
You think it's appropriate to send that kind of letter out within hours of four people dying?
I think he sent it out to people that set in a position to make a decision that he thinks is important for us to make. He didn't put it out in the paper. He didn't go out and tell everybody, but he sent it to the people in charge of our city to tell us his beliefs, that he thinks if we don't, from experience he has, from knowledge he gained from somebody over there involved in it, that if we don't act, it could happen to us.
What if I told you that the general consensus is that what he stated as facts aren't even the truth?
Well, you know, you have an opinion, I have an opinion.
Well, it's a little more an opinion, but that's okay.
Well, I know, you always bring that up, but what I'm saying is, he wasn't trying to make things bad and put down something. And I take offense to you trying to point fingers at a man that's trying to prove something by showing us what's going wrong in older towns and cities. And you're going to make it, you're going to come up here and slander him and tell, say that he's doing bad things, and it's just wrong there. That's wrong for you.
Well, I'm not politicizing four people's deaths, number one. Number two.
I don't think he was either, so.
Well, if you read the letter again, that's okay.
I don't have to.
But the fact of the matter is, you know, this isn't about the building inspector. That was obvious by his final three words about, at the end of the paragraph, this is about zoning. This is a backdoor to get the zoning done, and that's all this is about.
Well, it's about if we don't take care of our zoning, our codes, and everything It's about if we don't take care of our zoning, our codes, and everything else in this city, we're going to get caught with our pants down. We almost did the other night, because nobody justifies what's going on around here with these old buildings. It needs to be taken care of, and he believes it also.
This 150 is for new, new construction, correct?
And it all falls together.
It's for new construction, correct? So how would that fire floor be prevented with new construction, zoning and testing?
The letter consisted of all of it involved, not just the one, the three little words down at the bottom, zoning. There was a whole letter, you're picking out little circles.
Well, I'm dissecting it word by word.
And bringing out the parts you want, just like the news does, you know, just blast it out, make it look good. I'm done, ma'am.
Where, you have to call a comment here in a second.
Okay, sorry. I thought you were ending it.
No. Councilman Siri?
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilman Cherry?
No.
All right. We'll move next to public comment. Mr. Royal?
Oh, yeah, this kind of does pertain a little bit to the building code regulations, but does, does it remove the city's due diligence? And I don't know if I'm using the right terms, but pertaining to the building regulations, if we structured an ample advisory committee, would that carry over instead of having building code and regulations, have an advisory committee take the responsibility off of the city? If that's what we're concerned about on safety. It's just a statement. We don't have to argue it tonight. But I just thought to present that, in a sense, an advisory committee, I would think, you know, we talked, Dick's talked about an advisory committee to talk about different issues, but an advisory committee that could be chaired by somebody who does have experience in the, in the industry, and that people wouldn't feel threatened to come and talk to before we decided anything about building codes and regulations and making it a solid firm foundation of, this is the way it has to be, because there is, there is a lot of public comment about it. And an advisory committee could be the transition that protects us as a city in safety.
Thank you, Mr. Royal. And we will bring up building codes again at the December 15th meeting. Do we have any other public comment?
Mayor, what time is that meeting? And where is it?
It's here.
Except that in the minutes, it says if there's a handicap issue, then we would have it somewhere else. If someone requested, if someone wanted to come and request it, then we would meet somewhere else. But otherwise, without a special request, we'd meet up here.
That's at 5:30 PM on December 15th. Public comment, Mr.?
I believe Delphi adopted Indiana fire codes last year about 1976. Who's job is it to enforce that?
Well, we adopted by reference of '92.